Ms. Bishop. Twenty-four president, one ass. This time this story in moment, Mr. Commissioner McFarland.
Lay a little hand down in front of me if I want to talk about men just a moment. You were born and grew up in a place called Fulltime. How many people in here know about Fulltime? That field over there. That's go out to Mercer Highway and turn left on Chicken Road. They used to take all the furs from there. And I'd put it up tight against the wall and play music bands. Was born there, he was a farmer, ran heavy equipment, pulled over there, etc. Career came long, robbed the service. He served with honor and dignity. Sergeant Claude Walsh did some real thorough acts. In his service, he sent his platoon to the rear and he and one of the stayed forward and fired on the enemy so they could withdraw. He was involved in what became known in that time period as the May massacre in Korea. And we weren't talking about massacres in China, we're talking about them massacring our soldiers. Came back home after the war, Sergeant Walsh, and he didn't really have a good life after that. He had nervous problems and other physical mental problems. Probably today in modern times he'd be TD. But that was not diagnosed then. But I want to tell you two things about Claude Walsh. First of all, if you go to the Buckland Square and head toward Mercer on 231, go to the end of the first block. And the state of Tennessee has erected the sign there in green. Says the Sergeant Claude Walsh Memorial Highway. Because he's the most highly decorated soldier of all wars that ever came out of Wilson County. Next to my peace center.
Report from the steering committee, Commissioner Seaver.
Mayor and Commissioner, the steering committee met on Thursday, December the 4th. I'm going to the minutes, be receiving files.
Any discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Adoption of the agenda, Commissioner Seaver.
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Any discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Consent of the agenda?
No consent of the agenda.
This time I'd like to ask Mayor Debon to come forward, please, along with Ms. Rachel Warren.
I could be up here for a week talking about Rachel. Now, when I first got elected as an access officer, that's our project waiting for calling, I was meeting with Paul Lee, makes him Paul Lee down there. Somebody told me that's a place I didn't know of either. Like me back in the dark forest when this was growing up. So I found out Rachel Warren's Williams. I love you, Ms. Rachel. Yeah, my heart is out there for you. It's probably this move that ever made my life. So I talked to Ms. Rachel and I was convinced that she would do a good job. So she said, "Return." As access officer, me down there in the office, square of years. And then when I sat and run for county mayor, I told myself, "I need to bring Ms. Rachel with me." And I asked them, "That was one of the best boos that ever made my life." So I got to talking to Ms. Rachel. Come to find out, they had butt posted on it years ago. Rachel's mother was Williams, and her mother. I think basically we still got a couple of chairs, you know? We do have, like Robbie's got one, we got one. Rachel, as best you always say, my maid, since I've been elected, I honor her. And I have nothing but good confidence about her ever since. And this boy showed all the love for her. Been fine like my mother. I appreciate it very much.
Ms. Rachel. I wanted Mayor Debon to come because we know how much, and I have learned over the past four years, how much that she loves him. And the feeling is mutual with our whole family. And so tonight is her last regular meeting, and so we wanted to do something a little special. I would like to say two or three things. I call her Ms. Rachel, Rachel Ann, RC, good story behind that I can share with you sometime, CB, can't tell you what that stands for. And a few other names that I call her, but there's no question, every time I've reached out to her, time and time again, she's been there. And you know, there are times that I took off like a new puppy when I got here, and she had a chain on me and she jerked it back right quick. And I need to be jerked back and told to slow down, I still do some of that, but I appreciate that guy that's there as well. There are times that she's finished my sentences, and sometimes after some long debates that we've rewritten some of those sentences. And there's times that you'll see her, I have seen her many times ago, because she wanted to say something while I was talking, but she said, "I'm moving." Out of respect, she let me finish and then she finished. And in no way did you ever overstep your bounds. You were not a yes man, or a woman in this case. You've always been a strong leader and a great sounding board. You have gained the trust and respect of this commission, as well as those commissions before, four of them. I counted a attorney, which she plays quite often, and anybody that calls 444-1383. She's been able to take care of and earn their respect. There's no question, she's earned the respect of Mayor Debon and myself, because one of the first things he told me was that you better take care of Ms. Rachel. You've always been respectful and professional. You knew when it was time to play, and you knew when it was time to be serious. Your customer service level is at the top, with you dealing with the commission or anybody else. And I could go on, but I know that some of you want to get out to watch the second half of Monday night game, so I'll stop. But I want to say two more things. Ms. Rachel, I thank you so much for staying with me. If Mr. Debon had left, you could have left. And for making sure that this office had the same respect as it had when you and Mayor Debon were here. And maybe the most important thing, is I appreciate you for the last four years plus of making work fun. I enjoy coming to work every day with you there. And although I was scared when I took the over, you gave me a piece that I could get by every day doing you there. With that being said, this commission, along with Mayor Debon and myself, would like to present you with a plaque that will hang outside the mayor's office from here on to honor your legacy. It reads, "Presented to Rachel Warren, Executive Assistant to Wilson County Mayor, 1998-2015. In your appreciation for your service, your attention to detail, and your outstanding work ethics, you have driven this county to the level it has for possible." Ms. Rachel, we love you, and we thank you for your service.
I guess what do I say, other than when you work for the county mayor's office, you never know what to expect? This has been one of them. I am truly blown away, I am truly honored. I had requested when I let Mayor Hato know that I was going to retire, that I could go out quietly. So much for that. So much for that. And I did ask Mayor Hato, I didn't know this was coming, but I did tell Mayor Hato today about midday that I was going to step outside of my norm and ask to address you guys tonight. Sometimes he wants me to, and I always try to bow out of that if I can. But I want to tell you, this commission, as Mayor Hato said, you're the fifth commission that I've worked with. And Wilson County is a very special place to me, and special because I call it home. It is where I was born and raised, it was where my husband Charles was born and raised, our parents before us. Matter of fact, my parents, some of my family takes back almost 200 years in Wilson County. It's where we chose to raise our daughters. It's where our son-in-laws have been raised and their parents before them, and it's where our daughters and son-in-laws have chose to raise our grandchildren and our children, our grandchildren are being educated. It wasn't county schools like myself and Charles and our daughters before us. It was Mr. Debon that first gave me the privilege of being employed with Wilson County. Started out to be temporary, and it turned into 22 and a half years. So Wilson County government has been my employer for that time. And I've come to know a lot of folks who have become to be very special friends and family. You commissioners, some of you guys I've known for a long time, others of you I've just learned for a few months. But I count it a privilege and an honor to have worked with each of you and those in the past. Department heads like Sheriff Brian, Joey Cooper, former sheriff, Terry Ash, Mike Jennings, and Jim Goodall, and Sandra, there's lots of you out there in the audience. It has truly been an honor to work with. A special work family in Jim Kittle, Dakota Weatherford, Ms. Carol Martin before them. You know, we often laugh and say, "Sometimes you see more of your work family than you do your family at home, so far as working hours." But it really has been a privilege and an honor, and I count it very special that in some small behind the scenes way, that I've been able to have worked alongside two final mayors and commissioners that helped make Wilson County a better place and a great place to live and raise a family. And it's truly been my honor. Thank you. Along with Mr. Marlowe Debon, I call Mr. Day. His family is back here too. I recognize Jim and his family, his wife, his wife, and Carrie is here. My husband Charles and my daughter and son-in-law Keith are back there on the second row, and my granddaughters came in black. We have our other daughter and son-in-law Angie and Keith, who were not able to be here tonight, and yes, I'm not losing my mind, we have two kids and our family. And I have two grandsons, Alex and Kyle. I'll laugh and tell everybody, I'm going back to spend more time with my residual child. That's a home labor wife mom, and now I've got two new hats, the mother-in-law and grandmother-in-law. Thank you very much.
Reception from Ms. Rachel up here in the commission room on December the 30th at 4:00 to 5:30. We invite you to come. And at this time, if there's anyone in the commission room here that would like to say something to Rachel, I want to give you that opportunity. If you'd like to do that, if you want to do it in private, that is fine as well. Anyone? Seeing none at this time, we will move forward with a few more announcements, and then we will get some special recognitions. My bad, I'll do that right now. Commissioner Marlowe, special recognition.
I also had the privilege of serving the same amount of time in this county commission as Ms. Rachel. And Ms. Rachel's always been very nice and kind to me, even when I acted stupid. She took care of me. Be quiet. At this time, I'd like to call up here to join me, the Mount Juliet football team that was with, that went to Knoxville and played a few ballgames. How many do we have up out there that was on the triple B team? Come on up here, guys, and coaches. Have a resolution here I'd like to read. Whereas the proud city of Knoxville, Tennessee, since 2006, has been the home of the largest youth football tournament in the state of Tennessee, and one of the largest in the entire country. And whereas the Battle in Rocky Top has become the biggest single event in youth football, this year hosting 294 teams from 18 states and eight different age groups, all in one event. Whereas no tournament in America hosts this many youth football teams. And unlike most tournaments, which allow teams to show up with rosters different from their regular season rosters, these tournament organizers feel that to have a national tournament, they want to see the best regular season teams compete for the national championship. Whereas the Mount Juliet Triple B Bears earned the right to attend this mega event in Rocky Top land, where their basket, where their bracket included teams from Tennessee, Kentucky, Indiana, Virginia, West Virginia, and Ohio. And whereas the Mount Juliet Triple B Bears team coached by Mike Wheat and Eric Lewis, with the assistant coaches of Rick Jordan, Will Marlowe, Bill Mock, and Mark Snyder, and the team manager, Bill Swann. And whereas the Mount Juliet Triple B Bears team is made up of 17 4th, 5th, and 6th grade boys from 11 different area schools, with some of these boys having played together for three or more years on teams coached by Mike Wheat and Eric Lewis. And whereas the success of the Mount Juliet Triple B football team would not have been possible without the encouragement, involvement, and support of each player's family member. Whereas team members of the Mount Juliet Triple B team are Joey Albright, Kayden Gordon, Ethan Brown, Andrew Dravinson, Jackson Francis, Blake Hobbs, PJ Johnson, Jackson Jordan, Aaron Kenevan, I almost got him out, Garrison Lewis, Jordan Marlowe, Chris Mays, Brandon McNeese, Tanner Meyer, Jimmy O'Gwin, Trey Snyder, Stephen Swann, Brock Womack, and Spencer Wheat. Now therefore, being resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we recognize and honor all individuals who are part of the Mount Juliet Triple B football team for their dedication to each other and for their team's achievement for winning all their games at the Battle in Rocky Top Classic, therefore earning the right to be declared the 10 and under 2014 Youth Football National Champions. Of course, all of our, all of our team did not get to come. My own grandson has the flu. But these guys, of course, will represent those fellows very, very well. It's been an honor to, for me, to be involved with these guys for, it's been three years, kind of skipped a year with them. The coach, he fired me for one year, and I better got to come back in the most important years, thank goodness. So, but fellas, I'm gonna have a, we're gonna go out here in the lobby and take care of a little bit more business. I've got certificates or resolutions, copy of these resolutions for you to take home with you, as well as the coaches. But I would like to say a big thank you to Mr. Wheat, because head coach, he put this team together, he worked very, very hard, and I appreciate his hard work with these guys. He's took them as far as he can take them. Now he's gonna start all over again with a little beating. Thank you very much for recognizing these guys.
Motion to approve. Thank you, guys. Congratulations. Commissioner Franklin.
I think it's proud grandfather night. I'm not gonna read the whole resolution, because my grandson, my eight-year-old grandson and his team competed in the Rocky Top Classic as well. They won the state championship. In fact, they won three of the four last state championships, and this is national championship. If I could get the AU National Championship team, Mount Juliet Double C Bears up here, and their coaches hat. Youth sports is really a big thing in Mount Juliet. The county gives money to this, all the cities give money every year, and they feel a lot of good teams. Again, whereas the Mount Juliet Double C Bears, these are eight-year-old boys and seven-year-old boys, earned the right to attend this mega event by winning the state championship, where they beat Smart at 14 to nothing. Whereas the Mount Juliet Double C Bears team is coached by Danny Walsh, with assistant coaches Mike Leorda, Richard Davis, Kevin Walcott, Nash Roseberry, and Kirk Burrows. Whereas the Mount Juliet Double C Bears team is made up of 20 seven and eight-year-old boys from several different area schools. Some of these boys have been playing together for three or more years, they've been coached by Danny Walsh, and again, they've won three out of four state championships. Whereas the success of the Mount Juliet Double C Bears football team would not have been possible without the encouragement, involvement, and support of each player's family members. And whereas team members of the Mount Juliet Double C Bears are Casey Walsh, Roman Patrica, Tyson Walcott, Landon Barber, Nolan Shelton, Carter Hackman, Ethan Choate, Cannon Burrows, Caleb Burrows, Garner Pfeifer, Ryan Lipicott, Dakota Cornet, Anthony Shannon, Preston Mattis, Isaiah Roseberry, Carson Snead, Atticus Florida, Tyler Travers, Cameron Richardson, and Christian Moser. Now therefore, let it be resolved by the Board of County Commission of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we recognize and honor all individuals who are part of the Mount Juliet Double C Bears football team for their dedication to each other and for the team's achievement for winning all their games at the Battle of Rocky Top Classic, therefore earning the right to be declared the AU 2014 Youth Football National Champions. And I've handed one of your cushions, those for all the rest of the team members. I was a cameraman this year, I videoed every game. I gotta tell you, after the first game, I thought if they go five and five, we'll be lucky. They went shutout, state championship 14-0, but they won the national championship 7-0. Defense wins football games.
Motion to approve?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations again. Now we could have a report from the men's committee from TV star Commissioner Chad Menard.
Men's committee met here December 4th at 6:30. I said, "Angie, be a person."
Any discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Reading of the minutes?
Please, Mr. Reed, your minute.
Aye.
Any discussion? If you're not all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Communication from the chair, I would just like to let Commissioner McFarland, I mean Commissioner Keith know, that we did get approval of a $100,000 grant for the library edition that you guys worked on, that came in this week. And at this time, I'd like to bring to the front Ms. Terry Merriman, tour and director, with just a quick snap shot of what she's been working on, and she has volunteer assistant Ms. Tricia Bush is with her.
Well, we started September 1st, and we had hit the ground running. As a result of my meetings with stakeholders and community leaders, we've identified some immediate concerns, highlighting our need for further destination development, and that's the stage we're in right now. Hoteliers have expressed a need for transportation and organized tours here in our county. We now have an on-demand shuttle, limo, bus, and car service to provide our visitors with a comfortable and convenient experience. And with that service in place, we're now in the process of developing group tours, which will be arranged through the concierge service at the hotels. The CDB has a commitment from the Balloon Federation of America, and we're developing the first annual Wilson County Balloon and Music Festival for Long Labor Day 2015 weekend. Our Wilson County Fair is already known as the place to be in August, and it's hoped that the largest hot air balloon display in the southeast, the Wilson County Balloon and Music Festival, will become the Labor Day destination for visitors here. And in an effort to establish Wilson County as the place to launch a music career, which is our goal, the CDB is presenting guitar and mandolin workshops and a concert at Fiddler's Grove in April. These workshops are extremely popular and severeable in Gatlinburg, and are taught by Stephen Cofflin, he's a three-time winner of the National Flat Picking Championships. We're also in the process of developing a songwriter's symposium and a People's Choice Concert in the Mill, which will be run kind of like The Voice that you see on TV, so that should be exciting. The CDB has applied for and has received two matching grants, one for $4,500 from the Tennessee Department of Tourism Development, the other for $500 from the Middle Tennessee Tourism Council. These grants, which will be paid in June, will be applied to the cost of the design and content development for the new tourism website, visitwilsoncounty.com. And speaking of that, we're just days away from launching that new and improved website. The new website features videos and photo tours, blogs, and an ever-changing news and events calendar. When browsing our site, visitors may book a hotel right there, they may sign up for group tours right there. Once they're here in our county, they can access a detailed dining guide on their mobile app on their phone, which will highlight our locally owned, our made in Tennessee restaurants that we love and enjoy here in our county. Some of our greatest tourism assets here in Wilson County have to do with our rich history, of course. Developing the history page of our website has prompted us to develop a history group tour to match what our competition is doing. Now, back in November, Williamson County hosted more than 10,000 Civil War enthusiasts. Visitors enjoyed tours of historic homes, reenactments, displays of memorabilia, and a Civil War documentary, which played in Franklin's a Civil War documentary, which played in Franklin's refurbished theater. Shuttle buses staffed with tour guides took visitors on the drive down the Civil War Trails. Now, we're in the process of producing our own Civil War documentary, which will be part of a group tour that we will offer here in Wilson County. And with the development of that tour, we'll be in a position to piggyback off many of the history tours coming through Williamson County. And will we ever have something to show them? Our tour guides and historians here in Wilson County are not only knowledgeable, but their enthusiasm for all things historic in Wilson County is contagious. That's why Mr. Martin Frost, one of our reenactment enthusiasts and historians, will be the face of Wilson County's stories surrounding the war between the states. Take a look now at just a couple in a series of videos to be featured on the website's history page, one per month. These are called "Back in Time."
Here lies the body of a young Kentuckian by the name of Pleasant Whitlow. He lies here with eight other Kentuckians that were killed in the Battle of Lebanon. These are the only graves in this privilege, with a tall Confederate monument. The monument contains all the names of the Confederate soldiers buried here in Cedar Grove Cemetery. After the Battle of Shiloh, John L. Morgan was promoted to Colonel and given command of the Second Kentucky Cavalry. He was ordered to travel back to the Cumberland River and disrupt the rail traffic and communications north of the river. Pleasant Whitlow was one of his bidets, positioned about four miles south on the Murkishboro Park on the night of May the 4th, 1862, when Morgan's command was spending the night in Lebanon. Union General Ebenezer Dumont heard that Colonel Morgan was staying in Lebanon, and he quickly gathered about 600 cavalry to make a surprise attack. The night was dark, cloudy, foggy, and a steady rain was falling as the Union men approached Lebanon in the early morning hours of May the 5th. I'm Martin Frost. Visit Wilson County, and I'll tell you about the heroic part Pleasant Whitlow played in the Battle of Lebanon. I'll also tell you about the Lebanon races. Robert Hattan was born in Ohio in 1826. His family moved to Nashville when he was five years old. Hattan was extremely intelligent and entered Cumberland University in the junior class. He graduated two years later. He became a prominent attorney and was elected state representative. Four years later, he was elected to the U.S. House of Representatives. Hattan raised a company of men from Wilson County to serve in the Perishal Army of Tennessee. He began his military career as a captain and finished as a general. I'm Martin Frost. Visit Wilson County, and I'll tell you about Hattan's race for governor, his military career, and why he was burned in effigy just a few blocks from his home.
Any questions, comments, concerns? Thank you very much, and thank you for all your help in getting this together. Thank you so much for allowing me this time to speak to you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Merriman. Elections and appointments, Mr. Goodall, any names for the ads and notary lists? Do I hear a motion to approve? And second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Ag extension committee, four members to be appointed to this one. I would like to recommend the following folks, Ms. Peggy Simpson, Mr. Thomas Rucker, Commissioners King and Rich, and Commissioners Sarah Patton to be elected. Copy of Ms. Russell's letter was in your packet regarding these. Do I hear any nominations or a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Planning Commission, there are three members here to be confirmed tonight for the Planning Commission, I would like to appoint sub to your confirmation, Mr. Roy Majors, Mr. Gary Notes, Mr. James Woods. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
There's a second?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? J E C D V, position 19, also on the agenda is the appointment of the one member for that committee. I'd like to appoint sub to your confirmation, Mr. Caleb Thorne, he is in the back to serve in his position. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Board of Zonin Appeals, one member, next on the agenda is this appointment to Bozeman, would like to recommend Mr. Gary Thorne to be elected. He is currently serving as an alternate on that board. That vacancy is due to Ms. Diane Wethers moving to the Planning Commission. Do I hear a motion or nomination?
Motion to approve.
Motion to appoint, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? As you well know, the probation office was open. The Judicial Committee interviewed 19 folks. After, had 19 folks committed, HR narrowed those down to five. Commissioner Gary Keith, the chairman, and that committee came up with a nomination to give to me, to give to you tonight. That person's name is Ms. Betsy Chakowski. And I think we were, I think we can put a resume in your packet, so you should have saw that about her. And anything concerning that, Commissioner Keith, that you'd like to add before we go forward? Seeing none? So, do I hear a motion to approve, Ms. Betsy Chakowski, as a probation?
Motion to approve.
Here's a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? The regular reflective question, that is. Report from the Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Rich.
Mr. Chairman, Emergency Management Committee, here on December 11th, at quarter hour, 6 o'clock. We did not have a forum, we'll meet tomorrow night, 16th, here again, at 6 o'clock. So that's just a reminder to everybody.
All in favor, say aye. And opposed? Emergency Management Director's report, Director Cooper.
Board of Commissioners, if you want to follow along with me in your packet, go over some call numbers for the month of November. Medical calls, around 892, fire calls, 63, rescue calls, 303. Total calls for November was 1,258, which brings us year-to-date 14,761, which is pretty much equal to last year's numbers, is probably where we're gonna end up at. As far as activities, I did attend a team of regional EMA directors meeting in Rutherford County. Fire Department of Mount Juliet, status update, from what I understand, they're looking at the proposed site around the Nonable Road area. And until that gets built, what they have done is occupied one of our firebays at Station 3 in Mount Juliet to run an engine company out of. It's a three-man crew, so that's where that stands. A 10-year strategic plan has been completed, that is scheduled for EMA meeting tomorrow to be reviewed. Other meetings I've attended is under the list. I do want to make note to the I-40, to the 3-mile marker, tanker rollover call we had, did list all the state, local, and private resources that were on that scene. If you can look at that number there of all those departments and organizations. I do want to say that everybody working together, they did safely mitigate that scene for that many agencies there, so I'd like to, you know, commend all of them for working together on that. Lastly, I do want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and that's the end of my report. Are there any questions?
Hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
And a second? Discussion now, Commissioner Bush.
Thank you very much for completing the 10-year plan. Now, it's, any plan like that is very difficult to undertake when you have day-to-day stuff that you've gotta do. I know it'll be presented to the committee tomorrow. When will it be available to the remainder of the county commission?
It should be anytime.
So, will you mail it out to the other members of the county commission later this week? I guess that would be my request. Please, please mail the, the report out to the remainder of the county commission next week. I don't see a problem with that, Mr. Mayor, is that a problem?
Commissioner Rich?
I can first say tomorrow night, after the committee sees it, anybody that's here can receive one then. After that, spend good night, and I would say it'll be available in court, I should have picked it up.
Or we can email me the one. Email probably isn't easy.
Is it electronic?
Yes.
That'd be fine, thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed? Thank you, Director Cooper. Report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Rich. Sign the packet.
No point.
Okay, Mr. Justice, not here to argue. Chair's report, Sheriff Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor. County Commissioners, your report is actually was laid on your desks tonight, there's a couple more pages of what included, I've got them available if you need. The numbers are pretty much on par from each, from last year. And the roads work, again, I look at the weather and everything, the numbers are gonna follow during this time of year with weather and stuff. Couple things going on at the department of, over the past few weeks and all the way over into the first of the year, we'll be stepping up our patrols in different areas as far as neighborhoods and on the roadway. We're utilizing some different grant money to pay overtime for officers to come in and step up these patrols as it relates to driving, speeding, and different things. We find during this year, a lot of our thefts and burglaries goes up, so it's, we will be stepping up the patrols. And if y'all hear of any problem areas that, that I need to know about, please let me know. This Friday, as a result of this past year's, this year's budget process, we had nine individuals graduating the police academy in Dawson. I just, I'm saying that and saying, I know some of you are new, what involved in that process, but I want to thank you for taking the initiative to add them individuals. It's gonna enable us to increase our numbers as far as related to patrol and our drug unit and our SRO division. The, real quick, I want to compliment the school system as related to SROs. I've got a situation happen today in a school. I'm asking about it, but I'm not gonna tell you. I'll leave that to Dr. Wright. It's, I want to commend the faculty and the teachers at these schools, working well with our SROs, your SROs, this county, keeping our children safe. This particular incident, it was, it was all about communication. It was all about relaying information from the teachers to the faculty, to the SRO and everybody involved. And I'm gonna tell you something, it worked. And I want to commend them, thank them for them working with us. And it's, these SROs are doing good things every day, and I can't go into everything they're doing, but they're, they're helping kids. They're helping our kids, they're helping our grandkids, so. If there's no other questions, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and like I said, if there's no questions, I can close my report.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Stafford.
Mr. Chair, College Commissioners, we do not have a report from the Education Committee this week, but I'd also ask each commissioner to make a special point of the letter that Ms. Sonia Robinson put in our packet in regards to her vote on last month's Resolution 1411-2.
Director Schuld's report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, and thank you, Sheriff Bryan, much appreciated. Absolutely, great communication, everyone working together. I'll have to say, I don't know whether we have work excitement among teachers or students as we wrap up the first 90 days and end first semester, getting ready for the break. It's, it's been a fast and furious, and we'll wrap it up this Friday and pick up again on January the 6th. We, we back up a little bit. About a couple of months ago, Commissioner McFarland and Commissioner Stafford asked for a school field trip, and they wanted to go out and visit some schools. And they selected that they wanted to go and visit, like, the elementary, so we made a short field trip out there. From that, which not only wasn't informative, but it was also appreciative as far as not only, not only the administrators and staff, but just having commissioners out there visiting their school and walking through it and asking questions about what was, you know, not only what was happening in the school, but also, you know, looking at the building and asking appropriate questions. Well, same two commissioners asked for another field trip, and they wanted to sort of expand it to the Education Committee, and, which we did, and then, which wasn't intentionally late, but it was the idea that let's invite some other commissioners if they would choose to attend. They were welcome to come as well, and that we would even get a bus, a short bus, and make that field trip. And so, again, it was select that we'd go out to Glazle and West Wilson Mill and Mount Julietville School. And that field trip was, again, Commissioner McFarland, Commissioner Stafford, and Commissioner Bernard, attended with us, which I think it was memory-like for him because he was having memories, he walked through the school, I remember not only where his locker was, but also, you know, playing in the band, and, I mean, we were having a good time, you know, just paying attention to his memory, and even, I think you had some teachers that were still there as well. And I don't know if they wanted that noted, but he did. But all that to say was how important, particularly to school people, to see the interest as far as paying attention, not so much to needs, but what's taking place in the schools. And so, with that, the third trip, January 13th, and again, we're not making the selection, I'm gonna, you know, check that with Commissioner Stafford and McFarland as far as what they, where they choose to go, and we're going to downtown Watertown. And that will be January the 13th, and it's open to all commissioners. We welcome you attending, and I do know it's a hardship for many of you that, you know, work during the day, but you're welcome, and if you'll just let us know that you would like to be there, we can either get the short bus, the large bus, or I can drive the bus. And so, we would be very happy for you to join us. But again, it's really an important part of not only showing you what we do, but also, so you can also see that we're good stewards of taxpayer dollars. Recently, it was reported in the media that Wilson County was named as the fourth-best county to reside in Tennessee. I'll second that. Several factors were looked at by the Malata Rural State Blog when determining the list, one being the high school graduation rate in household income. This goes back to my previous report I shared with you, Wilson County schools ranked the top in graduation rate at 96.3%. Now, something I want to add to that, and I thank Commissioner Everton for bringing this to my attention, is something that's also to be noted, and people living in the area do pay attention to, is ACT rate. And I want to give just a quick note that really put it in context. Tennessee is one of nine states in the country that requires that you sit for the ACT to graduate. I didn't say pass. I didn't say, say score or anything, you have to sit for it. And so, we have some youngsters that will sit and bubble their name in and forget to do the rest of it, because they choose to make that note that they're not going to college, and so they don't see the importance of it, they're just checking it off the list to graduate. So, it really skews when you look at that composite average that's posted. So, with that in mind, we're gonna make sure that we focus, not so much as everyone's sitting in their junior year on the first Wednesday of, in March, taking a test, we're gonna make sure we start practicing leading up to it, because we need to make sure that the students know that even if you don't intend to go to college, that still gives us a significant measure of what you learned in school up to that point. It's also significant, because it also gives them access with a twin-year or above on the ACT, as far as Hope Scholarship money. So, we're gonna do a better job as far, as far as not only talking about the ACT, the significance of the ACT, but make sure that parents understand the financial implications on their pocketbook, where they might want to urge their child to not only be serious about about taking it, but let's practice about taking the test as well. So Commissioner Edmonton, thank you for bringing that to my attention, because again, that's not always understood, that when everyone sits for that ACT, it doesn't mean that they're taking it seriously. And I will tell you, we have a large number of kids going, of leaving Wilson County going to UT Knoxville, which the average composite for the freshman class is twenty-six point seven. That's the average, so we're doing fine there, it's just that I want to make sure that I put that in context. Along with another happy note, want to do a congratulations to Jalen Fish from Watertown High School for being selected as one of only ten high school seniors to be nominated by the state of Tennessee to apply for the U.S. Presidential Scholarship Program. These students are based, are selected based on their service in their schools, communities, leadership roles, academic achievement, and perseverance in the face of extraordinary challenges, and this young man made the health pad for, uh, the town of Watertown as his Eagle Scout project, which, again, so commendable. I also want to note that Tiffany Lowery has accepted the position of Transportation Director effective January twenty fifteen, and she will be coming to us from Lexington, Kentucky, and much, really a larger system than Wilson County, we're really looking forward to her joining us and, uh, in the capacity of Transportation Director. And I would also like to take this time to introduce our new Public Information Officer, seated back there, Amelia Hips, uh, I think some of you already know her, but she will be joining us, um, and well, she has joined us as of December first and helping us craft and brand Wilson County Schools. I would also like to note that, um, and this is in your packet, as far as we are, we have launched the first phase of our one-to-one digital learning initiative, and it's a comprehensive plan, expansion of technology and digital learning, um, over the district that will take place over the next three years. In Watertown High School, teachers and students receive training on brand-new three-hundred-and-sixty-five laptops distributed to each student to use at school and at home, and this really chan- changes the landscape for education. We are still on a textbook dependency as far as that, the idea that that textbook becomes the most important thing, it's just a resource, just a tool. And what happens when you transition to a one-to-one digital conversion, you're talking about being current, being relevant, uh, something that becomes a real important part of how it supports learning instruction, so we've launched that at Watertown, and, uh, both teachers and students are very excited, and, uh, again, um, we're learning more and more as far as what they're doing and teaching from there. And so with that, barring no questions, that concludes my report.
And, uh, I got a second, I think I heard out there, did you get a second? Got a second, I got a second now. Questions, Commissioner McFarland.
Thank you.
Number two, I'd like to encourage all the Commissioners to go on this field trip if they have a little want to, to see what we're funding and how things are working in the schools, I really encourage people to go. And thirdly, looking at the board minutes, uh, one thing I noticed there, there's been some changes to board policy, can we get a copy of the policy books you guys have?
Absolutely. Have you ever had any?
So, we say change policy number five dash one, two, six, one, do we know what that policy is?
And we can do that, and absolutely.
There's information, you know.
Well, and the thing that, um, again, to place that in context, we're charged to review every year all policies, update, correct, and make sure they're still aligned with statutes, regulations, that kind of thing, so that would be a, a happy project. Okay, thank you, and no questions?
Congratulate you on your focus on improving the ACT scores.
Thank you.
I personally think that's a, a critical, uh, number that everybody needs to look at, and, and thank you for focusing on that. Second, uh, was it three-hundred-and-twenty-five laptops that we had in Watertown?
Three-hundred-and-sixty-five laptops.
Three-hundred-and-sixty-five, to every student, yeah, Watertown?
Every student of Watertown High School.
Are we doing that for every other student in every other high school?
That will be the process that we're working over, a three-year comprehensive plan. Yes, sir, in fact, we have, uh, a meeting that's coming up scheduled on January thirty-first of, of Light District in Mooresville, North Carolina, that has rolled through a plan, very similar to this, that they're going to be sharing with us, not only their student outcomes and performance based on that digital conversion, but that will be part of what we roll out as a three-year comprehensive plan.
So there are a little over three-hundred students in Watertown High School at the present time?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matt?
Just like to tell you, thank you very much for visiting my wife and daughter's school, and my Chinese ship was very appreciative, they took their tour around the world, my building, everything, thank you so much.
You know, we had a multicultural celebration and visited Egypt, Ethiopia, Mexico, China, India, I forgot one, but it was, it was very well done.
Dr. Wright, thank you for the minutes as well, and your presentation. Seeing no other questions, all in favor, say aye. And opposed. Report from Public Works Committee, Commissioner Keaton.
Public Works Committee met Tuesday, December second, minutes in your packet, moving to be adopted.
I got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed. Let me out now, committee reports and resolutions, Act Center Management, Commissioner Jones?
Over.
Animal Control, Commissioner Marlowe?
Animal Control, May, December fourth, five o'clock, here at the courthouse, minutes in your packet. Uh, move that being received and filed.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed. Audit, Commissioner Bush. Back tax, Commissioner Patton. Cable television, Commissioner Walker. Developing tourism, Commissioner Marlowe?
No report.
Ethics, Commissioner Bush. Finance, Commissioner Glover. Health and welfare, Commissioner Seaver. Insurance, Commissioner Rich.
Mr. Chairman, the Insurance Committee met here at the courthouse on December the second, five-thirty, uh, minutes in your packet, they're receiving by me.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed. Judicial, Commissioner Keaton.
Judicial Committee met Tuesday, November twenty-fifth, and again, at night, at six o'clock, the motion will be lifted, must be, move to be approved.
And any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed. Planning Zone, Commissioner McFarland. Recreation, Commissioner Banner. Report from Committee, package are there, anyone wishing to speak on that tonight? Seeing none. Rules Committee, Commissioner Muncher.
Rules Committee met December eleventh, here at the courthouse, uh, we went through the first nineteen rules, we intend to keep everybody up to date on those, so those are in the minutes, move they be received and filed.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. And opposed. Purbi Topsoy, Commissioner Jones.
Mr. Chairman, there is a board met on December the fifth, uh, events in your packet, move, move they be received and filed.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. And opposed. Financial Director, Report, Mr. Aaron May.
As quickly as possible, there were some things on your desk when you came in tonight, one of those is a report on debt obligation, this is for the addition to the library in Mount Juliet. Interest cost is, uh, three-point-one-nine-five-eight, that is fixed, uh, so we have seen a little bit of a move in the market, the main thing that I need to go over with you is the cost of issuance and professionals on page two. Financial advisor fees to Stevens Inc., we paid six thousand dollars. Bond counsel, Basberry and Sims, we paid six thousand. Uh, paying agent fees, uh, which we're using U.S. Bank to be our paying agent, three hundred dollars. Uh, the rating agency fee for standard and boards was four thousand. Underwriters fee, uh, forty-three thousand and ninety-three dollars, uh, printing and advertising fees, uh, of thirty-five hundred dollars, and other costs of three-seventy-two for a total cost of issuance of sixty-three thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. So that is a report on debt obligation for the, the library. The, uh, second thing that I'll bring your attention to, the last thing that I passed out was the letter that you guys had requested that I write to the state representatives. That letter is written, uh, some of you had expressed interest in signing on, I guess what we would need to do basically would be to pass around a blank sheet of paper, put a blank sheet of paper somewhere for you guys to sign, I could attach that to this letter, and we can send it on if you're ready to send it at this point. Again, this is something that the mayor and myself continue to work on, we have met with Representative Mark Pote already, uh, we're working out meetings with May Bivers and Susan Lynn, and on the twenty-second of December, I believe, we're actually meeting with the Comptroller's Office. Uh, so this is something that we continue to work on, but per your instructions, I have drafted this letter. Last, and I hate to do this, but unfortunately, uh, I'm not given a lot of choice here, I have to read the Christmas card from the Comptroller of the Treasury. It says, Dear Mayor, Hedo, and Commissioners, this letter should be read into the minutes of the next meeting of the County Commission with a copy provided to each Commissioner. So y'all have a copy, and I'm quickly reading. This letter acknowledges receipt of a certified copy of the two thousand and fifteen fiscal year budget. We have reviewed the budget and have determined that projected revenues and other available funds are sufficient to meet anticipated expenditures. Our review of the budget is based solely on the information we have received and is for determining that the budget appears to be balanced. With regard to programs included in the budget such as education, roads, and corrections, we have not attempted to determine that the local government has complied with specific program statutes or guidelines, or with any financing requirements prescribed by any state or federal agency. A property tax rate may be included in this budget, we would recommend that local government officials be certain that all program requirements have been met before initiating the tax collection process. This letter constitutes approval by this office for the county's two thousand and fifteen fiscal year budget as adopted by the governing body. Pause. Before I want to go on, I want to say that I talked to, uh, Ron Queen, and he did congratulate us on how well our budget was put together. He told them that it took him maybe an hour to review our budget and approve it, as opposed to, he's been spending a week on most people's budget. So we're very proud of that fact, and just wanted to throw that out there midstream. Continuing with the Christmas card. Considerations concerning the budget, the Office of State and Local Finance has determined that the county's budget meets basic statutory requirements, we have detected deficiencies outlined below that could possibly lead to financial problems in the future. Budget adoption date pursuant to TCA five dash twelve dash one-eleven E two, the County Commission has a duty to adopt a budget and appropriate funds for all departments, commissions, institutions, board offices, or agencies for the ensuing fiscal year no later than July thirty-first. The county adopted its appropriation resolution on August twenty-fifth, two thousand and fourteen, this date is twenty-five days after the last day of July thirty-first to appropriate funds that meets the statutory requirements. Pause, again. This is a toothless tiger, the July thirty-first date means absolutely nothing. If you don't have your budget into the state by October first, that is potentially problematic. I'm happy for them to make this point, this is the way we've done our budget for as, uh, for many, many years before I got here, I would assume this is the way we will continue to do our budget, and I assume they will continue to say we should have had it in by July thirty-first, I assume we will continue to not. So, continued. Fund balances for the general purpose school fund, school federal projects fund, extended school program fund. County's fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget projects, projec-, excuse me, back up, start again. County's fiscal year two thousand and fifteen budget projects, the general purpose school fund, school federal projects fund, and extended school program fund to close the year with fund balances that cover less than one month's expenditures. See table one enclosed with this letter for fund balance information, that's on the very next page for you guys. At this level of spending, the county may not have the necessary operating cash or working capital to sustain the operations of these funds. This situation could lead to a practice of issuing non-conforming tax and revenue anticipation notes, or transferring unappropriated monies from another fund. State statutes require the county to maintain, to maintain a balanced budget on a continuing basis, and to only make expenditures if the monies have first been appropriated and cash is available. County Commission and School Board should review the working capital requirements for these funds to determine the necessary level of cash needed to sustain their operations. We recommend that the county use the cash flow analysis statement required by our office for enterprise funds to analyze the actual cash requirements for these funds during the fiscal year two thousand and fourteen, to project those requirements for the fiscal year two thousand and fifteen. The county should do a similar analysis to determine the beginning needed cash balance for each of these funds for fiscal year two thousand and sixteen. Place in the, uh, County Commission's and School Board's working capital recommendation for the funds with a copy of the results of the analysis to our office by January thirty-first, two thousand and fourteen. If you should have any questions regarding this, or if we may be of any assistance, please contact us. Sandra Thompson. Uh, I will say that Mickey Hall, the Finance Director, or the Assistant Director for Schools, is, uh, working on those cash flow statements. Uh, this is not something that we're not aware of, uh, Mickey could speak much more intelligently about each one of these issues than I can, uh, but when you're talking about a, um, uh, you know, when you're talking about it in excess of a hundred million dollar budget for the schools, um, and you're talking about maintaining a, uh, three to five million dollar fund balance, yeah, it's not necessarily gonna always equal, uh, one month's projected expenditures. Mickey is working on response to that, that should be available next month. And, uh, with that, I have fulfilled my obligation to read the letter from the Comptroller's Office, and that concludes my report.
Are you in motion to approve?
Over.
And a second, discussion now, Commissioner Franklin.
The letter, uh, if we're gonna just sign off on it individually, on pieces of paper, it does start off, Wilson County Commission wishes to register, should we not vote on it as of the order, if it's gonna be going to the Comptroller, uh, rep, I guess our state representatives here, it basically says it's going from the County Commission, should not not be voted on?
Question was, did you vote on it the first time and direct the letter to be written? If you did, does that cover it, Mike, or not?
I don't remember what the motion was, probably the safest thing to do.
Yes, we can vote on it again, not a problem?
Well, if that's the case, then I wish to, uh, move to table one, and, uh, basically, I think this is a job for staff, I think our mayor and our finance director are quite capable of communicating one-on-one with the Comptroller on our behalf instead of sending this out. There's a few things I'm uncomfortable with, but, uh, calling a bad legislation when all of our representatives voted for it, most of the state governors already signed it, I don't know that it's gonna help us, I, I think our staff members here, uh, could probably help, so I, I guess I would like to make a motion to table.
Do I hear a second?
Second to motion.
Got a second to motion, any other discussion? Commissioner Jones?
We both, I just, we wanted to have a letter written and sent to our state representatives, we didn't play that part of the Comptroller, it was information, information from our finance department to our local representatives that voted for this, on what it would do to us in the future, so I don't know, they ain't necessarily type of authority, voted on, be written and sent out, uh, it's just while we get there, I think it's been written several times, and, uh, so it's ready to be put in place.
My original, uh, my original draft for what it worked, for what it's worked was probably a little less diplomatic than the, than the final.
We got a motion and a second. We, we do, we're in discussion right now, I'm still, raise your hand if you want to speak on this issue, I know some people have raised their hand on the, in the queue for some other stuff. Commissioner Bishop?
If I remember correctly, that was a ballist rally, it was taken, not, and everybody did not vote, it was a play in the animals, but I did vote, and the ladies said, oh.
Somebody else wishing to speak? Commissioner Bush?
The, uh, the vote requesting you to write the letter is one vote, the vote approving the substance of the letter, it seems to me is a totally different issue, which is what we're talking about here, and I, and I think that there's probably a number of Commissioners, speaking for myself, will take serious issue with the substance of the letter. Each Commissioner wishes to write to representatives regarding their opinion of the legislation. Each commissioner wishes to write to representatives regarding their opinion of the legislation, but it certainly aren't right.
Sure.
And I think that as a result, the motion to table it is appropriate.
Someone else wishing to speak on this? Commissioner Bligh?
I just believe if we can send the letter with all of our signatures on it, just express it, which we've already voted on it, to, that we want to look at this, want it to be fair, I think it's a lot better than just coming from one office.
Anyone else wishing to speak on this issue? See you tonight, I'm sorry. Commissioner.
I think that writing to our representatives may be a good idea, just tell them how we feel about it. But I don't think it's going to make one iota of difference as far as that legislation. It's all been voted in the past, it's been voted on by them, and I think to go to the Comptroller directly would be better to deal with, you guys deal directly with the Comptroller.
Sure.
As if there's any wiggle room with this legislation.
I think what we're looking at long term is potentially a combination of activities that we undertake to work on this particular legislation. This was only intended to be one thing. I think if memory serves me correctly, I was asked to write the letter and bring it back here.
Exactly.
That is why the commission is referenced, because the commission is who instructed me to write the letter. I certainly could have gone on to say, the points expressed in this letter aren't mine, and not necessarily those of the commission, or all the commissioners. It was my understanding, I never expected all 25 commissioners to sign on to the letter. I expected those that wanted to would sign on, and those that didn't would not. So whatever you guys choose to do, whether it's table it to a future date or forever, that's clearly your call.
Commissioner Ash, you wishing to speak on something else or this issue?
Something.
Okay. And Commissioner Bishop, you going to speak on this issue again?
I don't know. It just seems to me that it looks like commissioners are not trusting the staff that keep working with the Comptroller. I mean, the law, you know, is not out of the game, and I think to get in an argument with the legislature is certainly not going to be a benefit.
They're voting in just like we are.
Okay. Now where we're at right now, we got a motion and a second to table it, it takes two-thirds majority, is that correct, Mary Jennings? Take a majority to table it. We're going to vote on the screen up there. Are you ready to sign? Please cast your vote yes, if you'd like to table it. Cast no if you do not, and we'll proceed after that. Please record. 14 no to table it, 10 yes, so therefore we will not table it, and we'll be ready to vote on the issue as it stands. Can we clear it? Vote again? I'm assuming that would be a, need a revote? Yeah. Need a motion to, I need a motion to send the letter.
I'll vote to motion to send on it.
Second.
I got the second. Okay. This time we'll be ready to vote again, please. What's it? Uh, hold on. If you're ready to vote, you'll be voting yes to send the letter, you'll be voting no, leave it here. Out of motion by Mr. Jones and a second by Commissioner Stafford. Please cast your vote. Commissioner Brown? Please record.
15 yes, 9 no.
15 yes, 9 no, we will send the letter. At this point, Commissioner Ash.
Thank you, Mayor.
This is not an audit fact.
No, sir, it's not.
So, and I've never seen one quite done like this.
This is the first time that they have ever done anything like this.
And I've been around 44 years.
Yes, sir. This is new. They have decided that they will look at every fund and see if it's ending, projected ending fund balance is at least one month, one-twelfth of the budgeted expenditures. Now, I will tell you on here, just from a little talking to Mickey, the School Federal Projects Fund is a reimbursement-based program. You have to basically have that money spent within 30 days of receiving it. You've already committed the money by the time you get the money to spend. So it would technically, in that School Federal Projects Program, it would technically be impossible to have more than one month's operating expenditures in that fund. This is, this is hard.
It's not like your balance was, where you get down, what this timeframe is, and this is what I'm coming to.
Yes, sir.
And of course, you know, we brought up public chapter 766, debated it to some degree here on floor months ago. If I, if the list of laws changed on budget adoption dates, they're giving us adoption date unlike I've ever seen before.
Yes.
Because, and you said October 1st, I think it's October 7th, but I mean, I don't, if the first week in October, if you have an adopted budget, they'll adopt one for it, basically. So I guess my question is, did, you might want to get some clarification, because my concern is, is you balance your books at the end of the fiscal year.
Sure.
We have to do a continuation budget. This letter gives no avenue to do continuation budgets.
Correct.
Or at least, they did not address it in this letter. And we are going to need some clarification as we get down close to the end of the budget cycle.
Right.
About continuation budgets.
Well, I want to go back to what I said before. I believe County Attorney Jennings and I have discussed this, and we believe that out there in TCA somewhere, there is a July 1 date.
There is.
Is there?
We're under July 31st.
July 31st, excuse me.
But it has no, it says absolute method about what to do if you come in after July 31st.
Exactly.
The other thing that's interesting to me is, is that it says we have to adopt a budget. If you'll note their letter, the budget is never approved until they send you the letter sentence.
But that's, that was another part of it.
There is something for them to approve it.
Well, I just like, we get down to, do we get into those little short rows right there, and we're trying to finalize it, so we need to get some clarification from them on that.
Right.
After them coming back and writing another letter, try to publicly expose us for not being happy with what they've done.
I would anticipate, at this point, not knowing about the situation with the 1% of expenditure fund balance, where that may, whether they may, you know, write us some of those in the future or not, I would anticipate, as I said when I read the letter, that we're going to get something every year that says, hey, by the way, you should have adopted your budget by July 31st. Do I intend that, do I intend for that to change the way that we do the budget? No. Not unless they ever put some teeth in it, and right now it has none. I mean, it's just a date.
They might put some in it.
Yeah.
But I would wait one more step if I could, Mayor. I don't think we should take a lot of offense to the Comptroller letter, this particular letter, because I don't think we're the only ones that got this kind of correspondence. Just thought we'd clear that up as far as the Comptroller's concerned.
No.
I'm down there a lot, and I mean, it's, it's got a lot of moving parts to it, and there are a lot of counties that put Wilson County in his position, when Wilson County didn't put itself in its position. So I mean, I think our government can stand pretty strong on itself, but just, and there's a couple more things in here, I'll just come by your office and talk with you about this one, I think we're already clear.
Sure. And what I'll do, guys, as far, and I didn't write, make up the signature page with all 25 of your names pre-printed on, I will get a piece of copy paper to sit up here at the front. Those of you who want to sign on, it'll be up here at the end of the meeting. You can come up here and sign your name on to it. If you don't want to sign on to it, that's completely fine.
I don't know where we have to sign off, because the county commission is holding pace.
You do, you do not have to. You do not, you do not have to, and you may not want to, and that's fine. I'm going under possibly misunderstanding what we discussed a couple months ago, that someone had mentioned that, you know, they would like to sign on to that letter.
Mr. Bush?
I'm concerned that we are sitting here, having acknowledged that there is a statute under which we operate, establishing a due date for our budget of July 31, and we are agreeing here to willy-nilly ignore it.
Yes.
I, for one, reject that point of view, and think we ought to take steps to change our process to in fact adopt a budget by July 31. So that's my, my point of view. Question is, are you aware of how many other counties are unable to meet the statutory deadline for their budgets?
No idea.
Have you asked the question?
No.
It might, it might be useful, because if, if in fact 90 of 95 don't make it, you know, perhaps the Comptroller is going to relax it. Short of that, it seems to me that we have an obligation to perform as we are told to perform.
There is no relaxing it. This is what I, this is what I would say, and County Attorney Jennings could speak much more intelligently on this than I can. But I'm sure somewhere in Tennessee code annotated, there is a law against walking a mule down Main Street backwards on Wednesday after 4 o'clock. It means nothing. There, there...
With all, with all due respect, statutory deadlines mean something.
And they should put something behind it.
It says July 31. That's all it needs to say. You will have a budget by July 31.
You're jaded.
We have, we have ignored that.
For 30 years.
Well, time to change. It seems to be.
And I will, I will say this, and let me just add to this. I think that the deadline from June 30th to July 1 outlines our budget year. I think the practice that we've had here for a long time is, let's wait and make sure that all our expenses have been paid and all our revenues are in. And I've worked in two different systems where we guessed that before, and, and you guess it, and then you get to the end of your budget, and, and times sometimes are not as good as you want to be. I think the deadline is what Commissioner Ash maybe said, October 7. I think that's the statutory deadline. I think July 1 is, or July 30th, uh, June 30th is when, when the deadline ends. 31st is what they say, in my opinion, is a best practice, just like they ask them to have a month's of extra in their fund balance, Mickey's not, these are best practices that I think that, as Commissioner Ash said, they send to everybody, and they hope we get it done by July 31st. But if we don't, we must have it done by October 7, and I think that is the deadline. Now you can choose as a commission to do your budget any way you want to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, that, that is your call, but I think what we've been doing before has paid off for us, but we'll change any way you want to change it.
Absolutely.
But Commissioner Bush, I do not think that we're willy-nilly in anything. I mean, I think we have a good practice in what we've done, we want to do it different, and these guys, and you guys tell us what we want to do, that's what we'll do. But I, but I don't think we're putting a blind eye to the year. And you've talked many times about a balanced budget, and this speaks on a balanced budget. It's not the same one that you have in mind, but it is, they just call it a balanced budget in this letter. So your point is taken, I understand, I just think the commission will need to get together and decide, do we want to change our practice? I hope that helps. Commissioner Jones?
Yeah, I want actually one quick thing right here, because of the love in the past.
Sure.
Is this a balanced budget? That's a yes or no question.
Yes, sir.
It is. Well then, you know, the state comptroller, hopefully, is subject matter expert on finance and board for our state, but it says here, it appears to be balanced. Now, you know, that, that door appears to be brown, and oh, it is brown.
Yes, sir.
So can you explain to me why they would put appears to be in there? I know when it says state is fair when it comes to goods in this state, but why would appears be in there?
I think the, the issue is, Commissioner Jones, that this is based on projections, and that if we overprojected our revenues, and they did not come in the way we anticipated, then our budget might not in fact be balanced if we were too aggressive. That is my assumption.
And that is just for argument there, we have asked that question before from our office, and that's what they told us. Appears mean, appear means projections, and then when the final audit comes in, if it is.
Yes, sir.
Appears. Commissioner Ash?
Just one last thing, about the letter. I know some people are a little concerned about maybe putting their name on anything, so I would suggest that you read one more sentence for the letter.
Yes, sir.
It had, it's about 15, 9, 1 as, so they know that, like Commissioner Frankham said, everybody wasn't in it, had it written with it.
Sure.
And that's just a fair way to send that down there without necessarily doing signature, but I know it was somewhat divided, so getting that a little bit of that, and I think that's important.
Yeah. And I apologize, the finance reports have been so lengthy the past few weeks. We'll try to make those shorter. Commissioner Mike Farland?
June, I beat your budget, so I will have to take you to close the books. 30 days? So that would be what date now? July 31st. Or is it July 30?
Commissioner Bush?
Just a very brief comment on, on the meaning of the word balanced, which, which I think is causing some concern here. The, this, the state interprets the word balanced as expenses not to exceed the combination of revenues and available fund balances. Is that correct?
It is correct, yes, sir.
Fair enough. That is one definition. Spending 40 years in the private sector, my definition of a balanced budget is that expenses will not exceed revenues.
Right.
It's a different definition, I acknowledge. It's a more conservative definition. And if in fact your expenses do not exceed revenues, you will build your balances.
Right.
And you will eventually move from double A to double A plus, to triple A. So there is a method to this matter.
And I submit for review that for the 2013 and 2014 fiscal years, our revenues exceeded our expenditures in both years. So although our budgets, by the more conservative definition that you use, were not balanced, we still moved in that direction.
Commissioner Brown?
Oh, thank you. I'm going to push my button. I'd like to change my vote to no. I'm going to push my button since then.
Okay. So we're going 14, 10? Commissioner Marlowe?
Was there a motion to approve Finance Director's report?
Not yet.
I make that motion.
I'll let the mayor say aye. I oppose, there were no other, nobody else in the queue, so.
Commissioner Mayor, thank you for your report. We're ready to move forward. And the report from the Budget Committee, Commissioner Mike Farland.
Commissioner Justice called me and asked me to do this today, I asked him if he would surrender his check to pass some town out for the chair, so I appreciate it. Resolution 1412-2, the Resolution, Board of County Commission, Wilson County, approving to transfer a property between the City of Evanon and Wilson County, Tennessee, moved to the President.
If we can go back and approve the budget report first, Commissioner Farland?
Oh, okay. Do we have a motion to approve the budget report?
Second. Any discussion? And I'll let the mayor say aye.
Aye.
I oppose, deduct that out of his check, everyone's... Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
We are ready to vote on 14-12-2, since he's already read that.
I have, I have...
I'll have a motion to approve to start with?
I will.
And second?
Second.
And now discussion. Commissioner Stafford?
Yes, I have discussion. I will be abstaining on this vote, and my reason for abstaining, I spoke with Commissioner Keith about this a time or two, this is in my district, and I do feel that it is only necessary that the city councilman of that area go out and speak to the people of the public housing to let them know what's about to take, take place, or take effect. However, I do think it's a good idea, and I see that it can be very beneficial for the Wilson County jail, I think it would, and it would, it would help a lot, I think. But until the councilman for that area speak up and go to the people, and let the people know what's about to take place, I will be abstaining my vote.
Commissioner Keith?
Sir, we're...
Commissioner Keith?
Sir, sir, members of the city council, they put the mayor, met, he put his back himself, met with the chairman, they discussed the decision, and... They discussed the decision, and they were agreed that it should be done. One of the city mayor appointments, the director and the councilor, they have flipped the vote. I would anticipate from the city ass, the county, the way he passed it, since then, I would see, they all talked through the director at that point. They just have such a sense of them, and then all the councilor, that's the.
Commissioner Bush?
I, I wonder, have the parcels been appraised, and is there a financial impact to this spot?
Nothing on ours, as far as appraisal. They, they're roughly the same square footage, including the ride away to the, to the road.
That may or may not affect the appraisal, as we all know. Shouldn't appraisal be done? Just asking a question.
Perry Jennings? I'm gonna swap government properties, and appraisal be done.
I feel that there's a requirement there. There would be no way the county commissioner would, and I kind of avoid the question.
Okay.
Not selling the property, you've already got.
Commissioner Ash?
Mr. Mayor, um, every commission, I put this in place about seven years ago. It wasn't after White Place, the old four rooms, and all of yours, remember I told you that, that we got it up there, and that's the way. But if we don't move forward in this, we're basically landlocked into the building, the building of the criminal justice center. Can't go west, can't go north with it, only go in the direction we laid out several years ago. Fire those pieces of property, try to alleviate a terrible parking problem and a future destruction issue. And the ingress and regress, and that's why getting it out of there, federal health authority, my research has found, security department is okay with the current access as it has. As a matter of fact, they've been working hard about navigating that part of the public housing, so they have made one part. I think past commission, past sheriff, present sheriff, every commission done a good job laying the groundwork for where we're gonna be in the future. And if you think building this new is a tough place to find, it's a place to build one, probably talk to the public and build a jail somewhere. This is all about location, location, location. You've laid the groundwork, you've just delivered the credit, you've done a good job, Gary's done a good job, I did a good job, let's move this thing forward, city council, private law, the city, I agree with the board, get this thing off the ground.
Commissioner Manata?
I've been in several meetings regarding this property exchange also, and I know, I've talked with Councilman Burton, and I've talked to Commissioner Stafford. He has told me, he spoke to some people in there.
The director of Le, the director of Lebanon Housing is sitting in the far back, and he's shaking his head no to me.
Okay, well, I don't know who he spoke to, but he told me he spoke to some people in there. But I do know the city council, I've talked to several of them, and they've all stayed there for it. So I think they're ready to move forward. And with the renovation on the downtown square, all the revitalization that's going on, it's really gonna be beneficial to have that piece of property. Because the entrance going into that property is going to be changed, you're gonna come off of two thirty-one, which is gonna add additional parking that we're losing from circling the square around the general hatton. So it's beneficial that, and I agree with Mr. Ash that it's gonna be beneficial for the judicial center also. Going down that little street, there's nothing there, there's no housing, there's not anything there, and it doesn't cut off the area where the housing development is. So I'm totally for this project.
Mr. Patton?
Uh, yes, the public works to be mad yet, and I'm concerned that it's in quite detail, and Mr. Biden was there to talk, different people were there to discuss the issue. It all makes perfect sense that we do this. It seems that it's been in works for quite a while. The sheriff's department has worked in it for that area than they do, than we have for the parking area on the square. It is very, a very feasible idea. Now, we've had this in our packets, since we got it the other day, if there was a question whether we needed an appraisal, I think we, someone's advanced that question prior to tonight, because we didn't have to do it till we came here. Some of these questions could have addressed either three or prior to tonight.
Commissioner Marlowe?
I have a question.
Questions been called for, have one in the hopper this time. Commissioner Walker?
Yes, sir. How was that the public works meeting? That was the first thing that came to mind, community, telling them there's a landfall that you're doing a real estate transaction. First thing that both parties thought, look, it isn't a great value. I did raise that question, and then you had some special feedback, and you had thought that same thing. So I just think it's a good idea, and I, I've known private citizens as block property, and there was cash that exchanged hands because there was a difference in bank. And I know a gentleman that started his business with the excess proceeds out there. I guess the question I have is if this property is, and I can see where we can use it for the county, for the jail, has there been a thought about imminent domain and trying to take that road?
Commissioner Ash?
About, uh, two thousand and five, I raised serious issues about getting the government to do the state thing, to buy that site and sell it. And the question is, domain did come up in two thousand and five, and again, two thousand and six, and two thousand and seven. And, uh, the bottom line, I think, let's do something else. I think if you want to do appraisal, fine, I'd like to move this resolution forward, subject appraisal, and I'll tell you why. Now, we're gonna get the best deal on this. President. We, we, we've also invested thousands of dollars in, in old cars for, fire those houses, getting that done, appearing in that block for future program. What was it Frank said, y'all put ten and twenty year plans together? I think I brought y'all ten and twenty year plan when I was here. And that is part of ten and twenty year plan to get this done. And we could appraisal, well, I'd like to go ahead and move this thing forward. There's issues with appraisal, I think, I think we're gonna be, if we do appraisal, I think we're gonna be, we're gonna be happy.
We had a call for the questions, so we are ready to vote. I did have two in the hopper afterward, but I apologize for that. I, I will say this back about the appraisal part, because we did bring it up that day. The issue became, what is a valuable piece of property located to a jail? It is not just looking at that particular piece of land and its value, that it becomes more valuable when it becomes located something that you need. To my friend in the back with the housing authority, this is, I understand, Commissioner Keith will pass through here tonight, if it does pass, but it'll still be left up to the city to make their decision. And so hopefully your, your voice will be heard with them, if that's something that you choose to do so with them, if this is an issue. Otherwise, we are ready to vote. We had a call for the question, and so if you are, please cast your vote. Please record.
Twenty-three yes, one abstent.
Twenty-three yes, one abstent. Continue.
Resolution fourteen-twelve-three, Resolution Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, amending, uh, Resolution fourteen-eight-seven-three, Regulation of Government, Use of Plan Right Away, Move to Approve.
Go here second. Any discussion? See you now, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Jones? Mr. Keith? Commissioner Walker? Please record.
Twenty-four yes and one abstent.
Resolution fourteen-twelve-four, Resolution Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, amend the budget, appropriate resolution for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, make it due, appropriation for Catticore, clerk's data processing reserved, move to approve.
Second, any discussion? See you now, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Ready to record? Please record. Four yes and one abstent, resolution passes.
Resolution fourteen-twelve-five, Resolution Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, reflect revenues received but not included in the regional budget for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year, and to amend the budget appropriation resolution for that two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year to transfer these funds to the R cap, move to approve.
Any discussion? See you now, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Please record.
Twenty-four yes and one abstent, resolution passes.
Fourteen-twelve-six, Resolution of the Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year, make additional appropriation to, in the general fund to other charges, move to approve.
Any discussion? See you now, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Mr. Stafford? Please record. Twenty-four yes and one abstent, resolution passes.
Resolution fourteen-twelve-seven, Resolution of the Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, amend the budget and appropriation resolution two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year to make additional appropriation of the capital projects fund, move to approve.
Got second, any discussion? See you now, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Stafford? Commissioner Everton? Please record.
Twenty-four yes.
Twenty-four yes and one abstent.
Resolution fourteen-twelve-eight, Resolution of the Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, amend the budget and appropriation resolution for the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year to make additional appropriation of the capital projects fund, move to approve.
Second, any discussion? See you now, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Please record. Twenty-four yes and one abstent.
Resolution fourteen-twelve-nine, Resolution of the Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, amend the budget appropriation resolution for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen fiscal year to make an additional appropriation of the capital projects fund, move to approve.
Any discussion? See you now, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Yes, one no? One abstent, resolution passes.
Resolution fourteen-twelve-ten, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Wilson County, Tennessee, amend the budget and appropriation resolution for fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen, make additional appropriation to the county mayor's office, move to approve.
Any discussion? See you now, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner Stafford, Mr. Everton? Please record. Four yes and one abstent, resolution passes.
On the next three, I understand we'll need to suspend the rules, so I'll move.
Go here second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
Resolution fourteen-twelve-twelve, Resolution Board of County Commissioners, Wilson County, Tennessee, approve, accept the bond, Wilson County Road Commission, Commissioner, Mayor of Zone Number One, move to approve.
Second? Any voice up? I can do a voice up? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Let the regular reflectors announce.
Resolution fourteen-twelve-thirteen, Resolution Board of County Commission, Wilson County, Tennessee, approve, accept the bond, Wilson County Road Commission, Member Zone Number Five, move to approve.
All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Resolution passes.
Mr. Mayor, if you need to go back and say something, this will start at sixteen.
You wasn't right.
I'm sorry?
He wasn't.
Oh, Roger. Uh, Resolution Board of County Commissioners, Wilson County, Tennessee, to express support for the maintenance of current truck levels of Fort Campbell, and to urge Congress to oppose any reduction, move to approve.
All in favor, say aye. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Thank you. Go back and say something. Oh, should you go back and say your second? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Is there any old business to come before this body? Any new business to come before this body? Commissioner Keith?
On the Laguardo Water District, I've, I've got, never gotten so many phone calls in any area of my district concerning water. Down that area, it's, it's absolutely running people's appliances. People have to spend three thousand dollars for water filtration, it's like they're getting an additional back tax on it. Do you know anything about that? They tell me we didn't, can't do anything.
No, sir, we, uh, we did call the board members in, as well as their general manager, kind of conversate with them, because we had some complaints in our office as well. Asked them about their issue. Of course, the issue was, they dug two new wells there, they changed from Lebanon Water and West Wilson Water Authority to their own. It's hard water. And so, you know, we asked them two things really, how were they gonna handle that, and then how was they gonna handle the future growth that's happening, and that was the reason for, I mean. What they addressed on the hard water issue was, they were traveling, as a matter of fact, the next day, which was a Friday, to go find something that would soften that water, a system that could be bought and put in place there. Second thing they asked is for us to reach out to the corps to see if they could have direct access to the river. It wouldn't be getting new water, because that's where their water came from to begin with, just through those other two sources. So we told them we would work with the corps to see what we could do there. I have not heard back from them as far as what they were doing to soften the water. They sent a letter out to all their constituents, saying you could use Cascade and the Dishwater and the Dishwasher and some other things to recommend to, to offset the hard water. But I have not heard back from them on if they were gonna successfully advise them something that would soften that water, Commissioner Keith.
I'm being told that, that there is an expense that goes with it, but there is some things that they could be doing to eliminate this problem. And I guess what I'm asking for is your office or this body, regardless of what area of the county, to see them get behind this and encourage them to do whatever is necessary, including spending money, if that's what they have to do. I mean, but they can't expect all the constituents, not that area, those citizens, to spend three thousand dollars a household trying to straighten this water up. That's their job, just deliver to their houses, should all ready be straightened.
Two out of three of the board members expressed a concern that their wife had already given them about their issues there, and so they were very well aware of the issue. Uh, and I, you know, so, so I know they want to do something, they didn't plan on this happening, they wanted to be self-sufficient and not have to be, not have to adhere to somebody else's water rates, is what their plan was. Commissioner Mike Farland?
Oh, I, I might express the same concerns that, that, where Keith did, I went to, uh, rinse and fish and lunch the other day, they're trying to go green, getting away from our homes, all the landfills, so we got a wash, we clean them out. And they go through this dishwashing cycle, and they have to hand wash every one of them, they're absolutely, it's hard, it's like, a little snow, and they never had a bad.
We have met with them, if you want to do something more than that, I'm assuming you could bring a resolution or something. All I do is appoint the board, so I don't.
We don't, we don't have any authority over that. You can pass a resolution, encourage them to do something, whatever, for this board, maybe even more, but we can't do that.
We guys have orders, offering us something, I appreciate all your efforts, I appreciate the need of your efforts. I let no one concerned about this.
I will let them know that you addressed it tonight. Commissioner Ash?
Both of us. The rest of us live in a underwater district. When, if y'all, I guess we need to be a little bit careful, whatever we start to do, it may impact, but we'd, we'd like to hopefully resolve some of our worries, because I, I feel their pain, and it is not good when your, when your pot water here goes out about every two or three years and everything else climbs up, they've got a legitimate complaint.
Okay. Any one else wish to speak? Commissioner Bush?
So what is the mechanism for citizens to affect the Laguardo Water District? Who, who has authority over it in a way that citizens can make it happen?
They did, they did have a board, they had a, they have a board, and that's who you would go to, because that's who the members respond to. They had a large meeting last week, as a matter of fact, and had several show up. That's who they answer to, their board.
So if the board ignores them, the only thing they can do is file a lawsuit. Is that right?
I don't know if I find, the, the board has the authority over that, I would tell you that having some community area of hard water and water, is that the state, Tennessee, that are requiring some. not required in software. If you do that, it's voluntary, it's not a law, make this cut off forty, fifty years.
But the effect of it is causing damage to the citizens, as has been described.
I understand that you would. I did some old complaints in hard counties where they locked down. What I'm saying is, if you file a lawsuit saying that they're not complying with state law, it won't pay because there is no state law. No state law.
Commissioner Patton?
I appoint their board.
I appoint their board.
So, if you appoint that board?
Based on your confirmation. So, I guess we do. So, that's, I guess, I guess. You do. And I think no ill will was intended, Commissioner Patton, when they did what they did. I don't think they had any intention of doing anything wrong. They were trying to make themselves independent, and, you know, it didn't work out. Why they didn't check the water out, I really can't answer that. Commissioner Marlowe? I'm sorry. Commissioner Marlowe? Some of us already have. Commissioner Marlowe?
I'd like to wish you one and Merry Christmas, and especially our people of Wilson County Government, and I move with your.
All in favor, say aye.